It is six o'clock now, start time for our Planning Commission meeting for today, Monday, May seventeenth. We, I guess we can go ahead and get started. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's see, Commissioner Eric Martinez, would you like to lead us in that?
You're the flag of the United States of America, a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And before we get to the first presentation, we'd, we'd like to start with Roe.
Chairperson Estrada.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Vialvos. Commissioners Elise. Commissioner Vanessa Martinez. Commissioner Eric Martinez.
Thank you. Next, we have a special presentation slash study session of the Six Housing Element Update.
Well, thank you Chair and Commissioners. Tonight, we're going through our Housing Element Update, and we'll jump right into it. We're gonna be not only talking about the background of what a housing element is, we're gonna briefly go over some of the legislation that is covered under, and it continues to be coming forth at the state level, and that requires us to do proper planning for housing. Are, we're gonna get into our Regional Housing Needs Assessment, and what, this is new to some of the Commissioners, but on the Housing Element Update, I think we did one in November, correct, Julia? But we've also since then done some site analysis, so we wanted, that's an important analysis, because you have to plan for the number of units that we are required per RENA and per SCAG to plan for. And then we're gonna just give you an update on next steps and what our outreach will be going forward. So on a background, a housing element is required under the general plan, and it identifies not only our goals and policies, but what the needs of housing are from within our city by income category, and this gets certified by the State Housing and Community Development Department. It really covers our ability not only to meet future growth needs and current needs, but want to make sure that we are, that we stay in compliance with state laws, and, and that we're looking for opportunities for grants and, and other funding sources out there. One of the important measures that was passed not long ago, well, it was modified, was Senate Bill thirty-five, and, and this allows for ministerial actions, and this is what you might hear as a bonus density if they want to do additional density, but they, and they're, they're meeting goals that we have within the city for housing that they can build additional units, and if they meet certain setback requirements or they need variances, it allows a little more flexibility to get housing completed. And then Senate Bill one sixty-six requires that the land use inventory and site identification program i- is maintained and it's addressing unmet needs. There's some additional Assembly Bills that have been passed, and, and this is for housing elements that identify areas and zones that are looking for lower income and addressing the needs of low, lower income housing to be built. And, and so it allows for by right development by developers, so it, it streamlines the process for them. And it does put limitations on unit capacity, but what it does is make it a little easier if you're building affordable housing. And Assembly Bill seventy-two is something that if the city is found to be out of compliance, the state may revoke prior approval of the housing element. Now, our housing element, we're in compliance, so we, we feel good about that, but we do need to start building more affordable housing at, and, and at all income levels. Right now, we've done some market rates, so we, we need to be careful of that. And I think our housing element for the next planning period, which is the eight-year planning cycle of twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-nine, is going to not only identify sites that would be suitable to build income, at all income levels, from very low to market rate, but it's going to also try to make sure that we're affirmatively furthering our, our fair housing obligations and that we're addressing significant disparities in housing needs. So that's where making sure that we are trying to build some affordable housing. For instance, right now, we're speaking with Jamboree Housing, we're speaking, speaking with Link Housing to do affordable housing at different locations where it might work. We're frequently in conversations with the county. They have their property down on Slosson, west of Paramount. We call it the Bug House. It used to be a vector control site, and so it's got a lot of cleanup issues, and those are typically where you're getting layers of financing for, at the state level through state tax allocation committee funding. This might be a good opportunity to do some affordable housing. The county owns it, and that's where we're trying to figure out what level of affordability, how many units. That's an area where it's mainly single-family detached housing. About six homes would typically fit, fit on that, that lot, six single-family homes with a, a road leading in. So we'll see where that goes, but by right, you know, that, that, that's what we were talking about earlier. It allows a developer to go through a much streamlined process. It doesn't, might not have to get in front of a planning commission, or even that it could be approved at the zoning code administrator level. And we try to stay away from those opportunities, to be honest. We want these to come before the public and the Planning Commission as much as possible. But as you'll see, there are a lot of different measures and, that are being proposed, and, and a lot of them will be good for funding. Others are gonna try to hold our feet to the fire with regard to building affordability into the number of units that we get, see to, to the construction of in the city, and creating a more streamlined approval process. So we, we try to track all of those bills that are in process. And for those of you who weren't at the November Housing Element Update here with the Planning Commission, November twenty twenty, we gave this brief introduction to what the housing element is and what our Regional Housing Needs Assessment is. And what it is, is HCD at the state level determines what the state's overall need for housing production is within the eight-year planning cycle. Now, you don't have to make, you don't have to have every unit built, but you have to try your best to, to see that, one, that as many of them are, are built as possible, but you have to plan for it. You absolutely have to plan for it. And, and so in this cycle, we were initially in our area, in the Southern California Association of Governments, which is the six counties. It includes Imperial, Ventura, LA, Orange County, Riverside, and San Bernardino County. We were assigned three thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine units. So we had a lot of issues with that many units, because it was lower than cities like Whittier, which are substantially la- larger in population and size. So we filed an appeal, and this gives you an idea about how that one point three million units within the SCAG region were broken down and by income category. So you see, throughout the region, a, a bigger emphasis was put on the very low-income units, three hundred and fifty-one thousand units across the SCAG region. So there's a definite push at the state level to see some, not only just low income, but very low income units built. And ours was set in at three thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine units, and we were a little concerned about where we could build that. We thought maybe they were looking at all of our, because we have about three to four square miles that are unbuildable. They're in LA Department of Water and Power and Edison Power Lines areas. These are public, they're kind of quasi-public right-of-way that you really can't build in. We have the Whittier-Narrows Dam area. We have the areas that are in flood inundation areas that the Army Corps of Engineers controls. And then there's all of the flood control properties that the LA County Flood Control handles along the, along the Rio Hondo, along the San Gabriel, that we sometimes wonder if they look at those areas as areas for development, but they're, they're not at all within our control, and they're in flood areas. So we did a detailed appeal analysis, and it, it got into not only looking at the way they calculated our three thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine units, but the fact that a lot of our areas were not areas we thought could be built unless groundwater retention was not gonna continue to be an issue in Southern California. But I don't see that changing anytime soon. I think a lot of our acreage, a lot of our areas along the Rio Hondo and the San Gabriel are gonna stay for groundwater retention for quite some time. So we filed an appeal that was substantially lower. We, we thought maybe we could do six hundred and eighty-eight units, so substantially lower. And we, we're working with Kim Lee Hoard, our, Kim Lee Hoard is our planning consultant, and they did an analysis, and it was extremely detailed. We, we challenged, you know, why would you go with this methodology when your own methodology and SoCal Connect is coming nowhere near that? So we were trying to figure out where, where they were coming. You know, ours was gonna be at nineteen hundred units, and we looked at infrastructure capacity, because this was, you know, millions of years of runoff from the mountains. We've got silty sand. We don't, we're not on granite. We're not on bedrock. We're, we're at the, what used to be just, you know, lots of river, mountain river runoff. And so it gets difficult. We have a higher water table. It gets difficult to build for, if you have to do proper supports, if you're gonna do any subtraining parking, or once you start going up really high above ten, ten stories, it gets difficult for those building supports in certain areas. So we're looking at that, and not only that, but like, do we have enough water to handle that amount of housing? So we submitted all of that, not only, you know, trying to talk about our, you know, that we're covered, we're near the five freeway, we're near the six oh five freeway. Most of our east-west streets are used daily to cut through to get to downtown LA, which increases greenhouse gas emissions. So we, we did a substantial appeal, and the only thing that really stood out to the Appeals Board was that we are in a, an area where we've got Whittier-Narrows Dam, and we've had piping that has caused some issues coming underneath the dam, and that's why they're doing the dam mitigation project right now. That really stood out to the board. So they asked us, we had two, we had our first appeal hearing, and they continued our item, because they said, you know, they are at risk of, of life if there were to be in a, you know, I believe it to be, it would be an extreme weather event that, that we would have damage to Whittier-Narrows Dam when it's full. But if it did happen, we would be talking about risk of loss of life, not just property damage like this other twenty-five cities that are downstream. That seemed to sit well with them, so they continued our item. We continued talking about that at the second appeal hearing on the twenty-second, and they said, we, can you get something to us tomorrow, Saturday, the twenty-third? With the, gives a full-blown analysis on where you could build within flood evacuation routes. That's what I wanted to do, was plan for building along flood evacuation routes. And the flood evacuation routes that we were looking at, and the other thing we did is we said, we're going to, we're already looking at increasing our housing element, in our upcoming Housing Element Update, to go from thirty dwelling units to the acre as the maximum amount, to thirty-five units. So we added that in. We took the county's FEMA flood evacuation routes that were in the Department of Public Works website. We looked at the inundation area, and the entire city is in an inundation area for flooding. And then we did a very involved GIS analysis. Thank God for geographic information systems, because we could not have done this overnight the way we did. We put together a twelve-page appeal, and we came up with an amount of one thousand twenty-two units. And we broke it down by using the same percentages that they had provided us in the original three thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine units. They approved that. We were, us and Riverside are the only ones that, in the entire region, that got their appeal approved. Riverside was for a calculation error. Ours was for the fact that we are at risk in a severe weather incident that if that were to cause, whether if, whether it's the dam overtopping, the spillways opening prematurely, and we're already full behind Whittier-Narrows Dam, that that could cause a rush of water and, and inundate the city. So after they calculated out and spread out our units and Riverside's units, they gave us two more units. So a thousand twenty-four units is what we have to plan for over the next eight years. So a thousand twenty-four units is what we have to plan for over the next eight years. And those are the income categories. Uh, as I, as I mentioned before, they, they put a higher um, percentage obligation on very low-income units that would need to be produced and, or planned for in the eight-year planning cycle. Now here is the site analysis. So that was an update to what you might have seen when we did our Housing Element Update previously. We've also been going through a site analysis. Where could housing be built? Uh, a lot of it would have to be like mixed use on existing commercial par, uh, properties, uh, or maybe they've got uh, five hundred feet of, of a parking area off the street, and maybe you work with that property owner. It's still uh, a difficult proposition because if those property owners do not wanna do mixed use housing, they wanna keep those parking lots as they are at the town center, at the marketplace, at others. There's not a lot we could do because we don't have eminent domain. Back in the day, we had redevelopment, we had eminent domain, and you might be able to make a blight finding to move forward with uh, an eminent domain action. But so we were looking not only at uh, where you could build, but where you could add in uh, mixed-use housing as an overlay uh, zone. We did this back in twenty fourteen. We layered uh, mixed-use housing on different commercial properties and even a few industrial. Um, we looked at different locations within the city where you might be able to consider rezoning. And so now the discussions are gonna begin with those property owners. Letters are gonna go out to them, we're gonna have to start talking to them about what we would consider upzoning. If you're taking an industrial zone property that has a lower per-square-foot value or per-acre value, and you're going to a residential standard, a lot of them might be happy with that. Even if they choose to keep it as industrial, the value of that land is higher if it's residential than if it's industrial. So that's what we try to make sure that they understand. Their grandfathered in, they don't have to go. But if they choose to utilize the fact that maybe we've added an overlay zone. So these are the type of discussions we need to begin having uh, with those property owners. And we also have two specific plans that are coming forward, and we, we wanna make sure that those stay uh, in constant coordination with our Housing Element uh, update, that uh, the Washington Boulevard Transit-Oriented Development Specific Plans i- is thinking about. Um, the densities that we're considering. Uh, we're looking at the area north of Slauson, east of Rosemead. It used to be the downtown, the deep, the, where you would disembark from the railroad at Serapis uh, north of uh, uh, Slauson. So it's in the Bermuda-Serapis area. That used to essentially be like a little downtown for Rivera, when uh, before Pico and Rivera merged to become one city. And we're also looking at whether a revitalization plan along uh, Whittier Boulevard. We, we're applying for that grant. We'll know soon if we can go forward with a complete streets planning process there. But that could also begin talking about how, you know, what the property owners in that area envisioned for uh, adding bike lanes or parklets where you could have outdoor dining, in areas where you might have normally had street parking. Um, looking at it from a different approach. And, and we're also exploring a business improvement district right now along Whittier Boulevard for commercial property owners to assess themselves, form a little board that would oversee the, the funds that come in through that assessment. It's basically a financing mechanism to allow them to go over and above the services that the city currently provides if they want increased security, if they want uh, new um, wayfinding signs as you're coming in off the six oh five or coming in from the west, uh, from Montebello. So we're looking at whether that would be something property owners would want. And all of these will also begin discussions about what, what they wanna envision Whittier Boulevard as. So we wanna make sure that all of those stay uh, in constant coordination with our Housing Element Update process. So um, as I was mentioning in our Washington Boulevard specific plan, it's a form-based code approach. Um, trying to figure out, and I hope you can see the white uh, outlines around the town center, the Commerce Center, uh, south of Wit- Washington. And then um, it heads up uh, Rosemead, uh, just a little bit above um, the Knights Inn area and uh, the uh, Office Development and, and the Union Building, the United Auto Workers. And it covers the properties on the north side of Washington as well, including the marketplace and some of the smaller industrial areas. And it hits uh, um, a lot of the industrial areas west of Paramount, south of Washington. This is what was originally envisioned in that specific plan. It's in a, a draft form right now. That'll be coming back to you at a later date. So some of the things I'm gonna present to you, please do not comment though because you might need to make a decision on it in the future. And, and uh, so I just wanted to give you a quick update on uh, what that Washington Boulevard TOD is. It's trying to plan for the light rail expansion of the Gold Line or what they call the East Side Corridor, tr- uh, transit area that's gonna drop down uh, Atlantic, make its way over to Washington, head down Washington through Montebello, Pico Rivera, and Unincorporated, and then the City of Whittier. And this has been a long time in planning. Uh, it is, did make it to the twenty twenty-eight uh, planning, uh, list of planning projects for s- uh, for the LA area to plan for the Olympics in twenty twenty-eight. So that'll help speed things up. I'd be very surprised because property acquisition hasn't even started, how, if they could get anywhere near twenty twenty-eight. Um, I worked in uh, for LA County Metro as a consultant and then in-house for three years. And you take, try to acquire one property and it doesn't go well, and then you're in years of eminent domain actions in court. So I, I don't know how they would meet that twenty twenty-eight timeline, but know that that's the, that's the goal, and that's where they're pushing forward. So um, and twenty twenty-eight is uh, we're in that list of projects. And uh, specific plan funding is uh, the way that we were able to get that Washington Boulevard TOD. We were able to get it through a three hundred and ninety thousand dollar grant from LA County Metro. And uh, Kim Lee Horn, who's also working on our Housing Element, before they got the award for the Housing Element, they had won the award for the Washington Boulevard TOD. So we liked that they, they came in as the most responsible bidders on both projects, and there's some uh, coordination amongst their team. And these are what at-grade stations and aerial stations. Uh, we are being told that the entire length uh, in our city is going to be at-grade. There's not gonna be an aerial uh, 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 function or definitely not a subway. They're looking at at-grade, we'll see where that goes. I think they've already made that decision. Uh, so when you're doing transit-oriented development, you wanna see how you can add some mixed use and, and multimodal environments where, we're working on a bus rapid transit air district that would run the length of Rosemead and Lakewood Boulevards. Cause they basically run from the mountains to the ocean. So it'd be a great location for a bus rapid transit. You can stop at Washington and Rosemead and get on a light rail to take you into downtown. So these are the type of discussions we're trying to see. How do you plan all of this over like a twenty, thirty-year period? Um, there was an existing conditions analysis that was conducted by Kim Lee Horn. And all of this is keeping in mind, okay, what are we doing on this specific plan? And how does this fit in with the Housing Element Update at the same time? There's going to be, once uh, we're able to get some in-person uh, community engagement meetings going, we're gonna kick those off again. There was a real big one in February of last year, and it was well-attended, and we, we received a lot of good comments. And, and uh, we're hoping that we can get those going again soon. Because when, it's a lot better, I think, in person than, than doing the Zoom calls. We, we did a Housing Element virtual meeting, and, and it wasn't, wasn't bad. But I, I think it's easier in person, and you can break up into groups and really s- get good uh, uh, solic- solicitation of input from, from residents especially. We wanna hear from them. And so there's going to be a community workshop coming up soon. We'll let you know about that. And uh, it's gonna lead eventually, we're gonna have to, whenever you do a specific plan, you have to amend the general plan and zoning maps. You have to do, take those a planning commission and city council, and that's why I caution you not to say anything about this process yet. But when you're talking about form-based code, and that's the way we're looking at this specific plan here, you're focusing more on uh, blending the regulatory with the design. And, and uh, it's a different way to think of things. It was real big, like thirty, forty years ago, and uh, it's kind of really uh, taken off now. And we wanna make sure we're, we're not just using a, a traditional specific plan approach to the Washington Boulevard TOD. And so you're really looking at how do you, how does that building interact? And what type of, what I like to say, ground floor experience you have when you leave that building? And how is it interconnecting with, with the Boulevard? And uh, so these are examples of areas that you, where, what it might look like if you're doing a nice transit-oriented area, uh, three and four-story designs. Um, of course, there's gonna be a, a California Environmental Quality Act is always coming into play. There'll be an EIR, an Environmental Impact Report that gets prepared, and that will also come to you for your consideration. And uh, up to date, we've done just the market study, the existing conditions, and the community engagement. Uh, we will do more speaker uh, engagements and workshops and trying to identify, how do we keep the character of Pico Rivera while still planning for, for future transit and future development? Um, what's important, more jobs? And, and how, how do uh, you control issues with regard to employment? And, and keeping small-town mom-and-pop businesses in place? So these are a lot of the discussions that were being had at that time. Uh, how, uh, how are homeless uh, dealt with and, and planned for in the area? And how do you maintain the sales tax within the shopping centers and, and not impact sales tax? Uh, so we, we should be bringing in uh, a specific plan draft in front of you in late uh, spring. Uh, I'm guessing it might be uh, closer towards uh, uh, late spring of twenty twenty-one. Um, some other concurrent projects is within that TOD area, the Optimus Project at the Old El Rodeo. They're, they're looking at doing a community meeting coming up for what they're proposing as two hundred and fifty-five units. Um, uh, my, there it is. The North Slauson, East Rosemead, image bounced over to one. It's really looking at two uh, lots and a third one that could be used for parking at the southwest, southeast, and northwest corners of Bernie, Bermudas and Serapis. Vacant lots that have been sitting there for a while. And this is looking south, uh, in a southerly direction. Uh, so it's right next to that Chevron at the corner of uh, Serapis and Slauson. And this is uh, the potential boundaries for that area. And it matches up fairly closely with the opportunity zone that's already in our general plan. Here's some densities when you, when you look at the housing element. This is what a normal two to eight dwelling units to the acre would look like in Pico Rivera on the left. On the right, you see, the, this is similar to what was built down at Passins and Rivera, which is an eight to fifteen dwelling units to the acre, three stories typically townhomes. They sold exceedingly well and quick, and it was amazing how, how well that uh, project did. And uh, for those of you who don't know, that used to be the Via Apartments. It was a ninety-unit apartment complex that was acquired for the underpass. It had a lot of issues with crime, drug, and gang activity. So the fact that we've got thirty-six nice, brand-new townhomes there, we wanted to get some housing back, you know? Not the same level of density, but some. And so I think that uh, that eight to fifteen dwelling units to the acre, that's where you're gonna see more of. Um, right now, you're gonna hear from us in the future about Wilmington Homes. Uh, they're looking at a site up here on Durfee and Stevens, right at the railroad tracks north of, of uh, Whittier. It used to be a corrugated metal industrial building that uh, had been there for years. And uh, the Sutro family is looking to sell it and develop it. And the, the, the housing type that comes in is gonna look more like that condo uh, townhome style. Uh, we're gonna hear more about that. These uh, mid-rise apartments, um, these are the type of things you might see on a Boulevard. And, and sure enough, we, that idea came in from Optimus on the Old El Rodeo site. And, and so we're gonna, we'll consider that when the application is complete, when it gets in front of us. And um, they want to do some outreach though, so pay attention to that if you wanna see if it goes virtual. Uh, if you do attend, I would try not to, again, try not to say anything if you go because it'll be before you in the future. Um, the housing element, we are close to um, doing a second community workshop and then submitting it in the summer. Um, we're also probably going to conduct one-on-ones with the city council and with the, with you all to get your input on the housing element. I just wanted to give you an update. We do have a, a virtual workshop coming up in mid-June on the seventeenth, from six to eight PM. You can also attend. Again, I would hold off any comments, and I don't want anybody to see you guys were making comments on something before you voted on it. And uh, so next steps uh, is, the main thing to look for is uh, the second community workshop. It's gonna be virtual, and uh, and then we're gonna do a draft, a public release for review. And then we're gonna take it back tentatively on the July thirteenth, city council for a study session, so. And I need water. I'm okay. But uh, please uh, that's all I wanted to present. I, I, I would caution you not to say too much. Other, if you have any comments or questions, I'm ready to ask any at this time or receive any that are asked at this time. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Your caution is not to comment on what you just presented.
Pardon?
Your caution is not to comment on what you just presented.
Well, um, I think you could uh, I'm trying to think how best they can because they're gonna act on it in the near future.
Oh, okay. So this is just information?
Yes.
I would say don't, don't, do not.
Comment on specific projects that he mentioned, but on the housing element, certainly, please feel free to comment on the housing element.
And since right now it's strictly in a...
I just wondered if there'd be apartments on the, at the Rodeo site? Are they considering apartments or homeownership there?
Those are apartments that they're proposing.
See, that's what I think most of the people in Pico Rivera have always tried, to stay away from more apartments. We have them all the way up and down Rosemead. We have them on, on Slauson, on Bird. We have them on, um, we have more apartments in Pico Rivera, a lot of them. And then we're gonna build new ones. And you know what happens when you get a lot of people in apartments? It's not homeownership, so they really don't take care of them. And then you can't ask people to leave once they've moved into an apartment. So I, they're not considering building homes there?
No.
It's apartments. That was my question.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, any questions here?
I was just curious. Thank you for the information. It seems like you guys have been working and doing a lot in the past few months, so appreciate the overview. Um, I had a question on the site opportunity analysis that you did for the housing element. Um, I wanted to make sure I understood. So you were looking both at vacant part of parcels and then also opportunities where you could look at rezoning to maybe identify underutilized parcels?
That's right. The majority of these are not vacant. Um, the majority of them are. Um, some of them in, uh, have good parking fields where there's a lot of opportunity to, or they're immediate, they're industrial that are immediately adjacent to residential, that residential developers have been calling and asking about. And, and so there are areas where we've heard that there might be interest in a change from industrial to residential. And when they butt up against it on the north and the east, we thought, okay, those might be good opportunities for changing up the mix, adding a, an overlay zone or even changing the zoning if they're up to that, so.
Okay. That's really helpful to understand. I mean, I, I think I saw in the presentation, one of the comments was that the city is pretty built out, right? So there aren't as many. So it's good to know you're looking at a mix of different parcels.
Like one of them, if you see it here, and this is absolutely strictly a draft right now, so. But one of them is the shopping center uh, where the Chuck E. Cheese's and the Dede's is at. And um, the parcel, it's to the south where the Dede's is. Dede's is looking to leave, and um, they are talking with the residential developer right now. And I had a meeting with them today, and they're looking at whether that could be a good opportunity for mixed use. And they're looking at townhomes, and they're looking at the, not a high density. So I, I think it would mix well there, and, and that's why we included that. And there are some others, um, you don't really see because the main thing we did in our site analysis was hold true to our appeal. So even though we knew that the Sutro property along the railroad tracks on Durfee, um, north of Whittier, even though we knew that that was already zoned residential multifamily, um, we didn't change a lot of the zoning in that area. We didn't look at the other areas for additional upzoning uh, because we wanted to stay on the Washington, Rosemead, and Beverly evacuation... Uh, because we wanted to stay on the Washington, Rosemead and Beverly evacuation routes as much as possible. Cuz that's what we said in our appeal would be the best way to do planning for the future, so we wanted to stick to that.
And if I may, I was just gonna say, I think that seems consistent with sort of the growth of the region, you know, really directing new development towards major corridors. So, you can really balance out a mix of uses, so people can actually live where they can go walk outside and get a coffee or go down the street to the market. Um, so, that's really, I think, in line with a lot of the thinking in the region, so good to hear.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Vanessa Martinez, do you have any comments, questions? I know you're on the phone.
Not at the moment. Thank you, Mr. Garcia, for the presentation.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, just to piggyback off this, uh, this will be included in like the, you know. I can't really see the the plans, you know, the blue. Uh, would that be included in the draft, like, just get an idea which properties those are and?
And and they might get into greater, um, like, take each area and break it down and get into more detail on it. So, you have a better, uh, consideration of it. And and then a lot of, a lot of it will be guided by our discussions with those property owners, so.
And as, you know, properties are rezoned or there's an overlay for from industrial to residential. I know you mentioned the property owners would get a notice of that. However, would the surrounding residential areas also get a notice? That X property might get this rezoning or?
You know, when the letters go out to, uh, that'll be more, it'll be included in the outreach letters that go in. But when the letters go to directly to property owners, it's it's more directed conversation and inviting them to contact us. To get their input, uh, property owners near these areas will get notified though about the the housing element update and. The consideration for increased densities and different commercial properties. Not the letters that are that are going to the property owners, they're gonna be very specific to them.
Maybe to maybe to Councilmember Estrada's point is that part of the outreach for the draft housing element will include a discussion of this.
Oh, yes.
With the public, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, that's, I believe that wraps up comments and questions. Uh, thank you again for the presentation on that. Um, next order of business here, we have a public hearing, a zoning amendment number one eighty-eight. Amending section eighteen point zero four, definitions and chapters eighteen point forty-six. Signs and advertising to Title eighteen zoning of the Pico Rivera Municipal Code to allow digital billboards and industrial zones.
So, thank you Chair and Commissioners. Uh, zoning code amendment number one eighty-eight is specifically. Uh, modifying our sign, uh, code to allow digital billboards. And in our case, we wanted to add them into industrial zones that are close to and visible from the freeway. We actually have two industrial projects that are coming forward and that kind of spurred this conversation to even get us thinking about this. So, you know, our our current sign is a sign ordinance does not allow for off-premise or what you would see on a freeway. Uh, an on-premise is when it's for like, let's say it's an auto zone and you wanted or an, uh, auto. Uh, sales location like maybe McKenna BMW or McKenna Audi down in, uh, um, Norwalk. And they wanna advertise their cars. That's an on-premise sign and it's strictly allowing for the. The advertising of on-premise activities. Off-premise is any advertising for business, so. Um, we wanted to allow it in industrial areas and make sure that, uh, everybody understands. It's gonna meet all the business and professional code, uh, with regard to no obscene, indecent or immoral or more immoral characters. Um, the billboards are no bigger than twelve hundred square feet. Uh, there are more than, uh, two hundred and fifty feet from any residential areas. Um, there's at least a thirty-foot clearance over any public drive areas. And, uh, there's at least seventy-five feet from the bottom of the billboard support. So, there there are a few things we wanted to add into the ordinance, uh, pretty standard to be quite honest, uh. Um, Caltrans covers and they have the control over these billboards to a certain degree, anything within six hundred and sixty feet. And they look at everything from brightness studies. They looked at the Dr. Lewin study to look at, uh. Um, how visible and readable they are at certain distances, given certain brightness. And that's where they put a lot of their guidance as far as being at least two hundred and fifty feet away from a billboard. Because the ones that we have coming in right now are proposals for fourteen by forty-eight billboard on what's that? It's called the Carlson Site. It's the right at Beverly Boulevard. It's a nineteen-acre, uh, vacant land. That's been sitting there for thirty, forty years at least. It was separated when the six oh five freeway was being built. Those properties went all the way from what used to be a railroad spur. And that goes across the six oh five freeway on that, uh, uh, railroad bridge. That, uh, property, we used to go from there all the way over to Pioneer Boulevard and then the six oh five came. Kinda created an orphan, uh, property situation there, uh, where it's inaccessible. So, there's a proposal to build a bridge from Beverly Boulevard to drop into that site. And one of the ideas was to put a billboard there, uh, share in a development agreement with the city, to share in some of that revenue. And so, that's why we, uh, we started thinking about billboards a little more closely. We brought in a consultant. Uh, from Terra Real Estate, Scott Sheldon, who has been doing real estate for school districts and cities for forty-plus years. But, uh, the last thirty-five, he's been focusing on, uh, doing some more billboard, uh, and understanding regulations. So, it's been great having, uh, Mr. Sheldon. If you guys get into too much detail, he's ready. And I'm ready to call him on his cellphone if there are any questions, so. Um, Caltrans does regulate a lot of what happens, uh, along their freeways. They they don't, they can't be in landscaped freeway areas and there's a map that shows. Uh, if you do, you have to get, uh, uh, an exception or an exemption from them. Um, you have to get permission from that property owner to put a billboard on on the, uh, on their site. And, um, there are separation distances between billboards. Whether it's a static billboard that doesn't change, it's it's just one, uh, uh, face that gets put on it. And it stays there for however long they wanted that advertising. Digital are the ones that do eight-second clicks, so they they change every, say, to eight seconds. And you have to be at least five hundred feet from a static billboard to a digital or a thousand feet from one digital billboard to another. We used all of that because we wanted to see how could we control messaging? How could we control, um, what what it looks like? And what we would do is not just get owner consent, we wanna enter into development agreements. Where we would put increased restrictions on, um, let's say you might not want cannabis to be advertised. Or gentlemen's clubs or other strip clubs, like maybe those, whatever, uh, Planning Commission and City Council wants to restrict. And there's a lot of good examples because school districts and other cities have been doing more billboards, uh. And really, there's only two locations, uh, where we could probably do it in the city. Um, we wanted to see where there, you know, how could we get additional public benefits out of billboards? And and, uh, what we were looking at is a a good percentage of them to of the advertising to be used for public service announcements. And share of compensation, actual revenue that could be generated from these billboards to help the city with general fund revenue coming in. Um, as I mentioned, Terra Realty, uh, came in and they were helping us understand all the Caltrans regulations. And and helping us identify locations and look at the locations that were being proposed by these property owners. And then we'll actually negotiate with the billboard developers and those property owners. Um, Terra Realty looked at seven different locations and found that there might be one location. Most people don't know this, but. West of the Rio Hondo along Telegraph, there is one property owned by the Potter Family and it's a truck wash. Most people don't know, but that is in Pico Rivera and that's about the only location off the five where. And even that, it's about three hundred and ninety feet off the five freeway, so it might not have a lot of marketability. There were six different locations he studied along the six oh five. And from them, only two properties really look to have any good visibility. Cuz when you've got overpasses and stuff of that nature, they block a lot of the view. And so, one is the Bay Bar Road property, north of, uh, Rose Hills Drive, north of Mission Mill Road. Uh, it's the last property in the city. Used to be, uh, an equestrian training facility and and it recently sold to an industrial developer. It was already zoned industrial. And, uh, so we're gonna be bringing that forward to you in the future. For consideration of a digital billboard development agreement with that property owner, so it'd be a three-way development agreement. And area number five off the six oh five is the area I was speaking of. It you, that blue area is a public facility zoning and that's that old railroad spur that used to cut through that property. Uh, this is also being proposed for an industrial use. Um, it's possible that a billboard could be located there as well. And, uh, and here is that property west of the Rio Hondo River. On the north side of Telegraph, it's the very last property in Pico Rivera and I believe the only one that is west of the Rio Hondo. That, so that one also had some potential. I I it's so far off the five freeway, I don't know that it would work for a billboard. But that's what our consultant did, not only helping us understand what the, how we should amend our ordinance in our code. Or create the ordinance to amend the code, but also looking at, well, are there any good sites within the city? So, he went out and did a site analysis and and, uh, you know, we'll let you know how that goes. But before you, what we have before you tonight is strictly, uh, this public hearing to consider an amendment, uh. To our zoning code, uh, we're, it's amendment number one eighty-eight, amending section eighteen point oh four. And eighteen point four six. And this would, uh, basically allow digital billboards to be, uh, considered within the city and industrial zones. Uh, industrial light, industrial general and industrial plan development. We, uh, received no questions, uh, or comments from the public. Uh, so I then take it back to the chair, uh, for your any questions, comments, uh.
Thank you. Uh, yes, so fellow commissioners, any questions on this? Vanessa, Commissioner Martinez on the phone?
Not at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, I had a couple clarifying questions. Um, so first, will the Planning Commission be required to, um, confirm all new digital billboards within the city? Or will that be a planning staff decision?
No, um, when the development agreements for these properties come forward for a billboard, that's when the, uh, we can get into greater detail. On what we would want on them, you know, what we don't want on the messaging and what we do want on the messaging. Outside of that, the 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 business and professional code already covers obscene and indecent and immoral language. But, uh, when you get into the development agreement, you can dive into greater detail on what you don't want on those as far as messaging on those boards.
Okay. Um, and then my second question is, uh, if, um, if the digital billboards within the city are coming forward for a planning commission approval. Uh, will other non-digital billboards also come to the commission for that same approval?
Uh, they could, they could. There are very few properties that would, uh, allow for. Especially with the distance requirements between the billboards, uh, but there could be some. I don't know how it would work, but there could be some between Rose Hills and Mission Mill Road. There are four big industrial properties there. Um, I don't know that they have any visibility because there's a lot of landscaping that's there right off the, uh, off-ramp. And and so, um, what has to happen, for example, on this area on, these are by no means, uh, set in stone. But the the area here, what we call the Carlson Site because it's owned by the Carlson Family. It's going to need to go through a relocation. If the if that billboard company has eminent domain credits where maybe their billboard was acquired for a freeway widening and they have eminent. Domain credits to place a billboard or a delisting, cuz that is a, uh, a landscaped area. So, it would need to be taken off the landscape map at the Caltrans level. Same thing with area number one, the Bay Bar area. That's another area where there, it's a landscape area on the freeway. Uh, again, that would need to go through a, uh, a relocation of an existing billboard to that property. Uh, an eminent domain credit could be utilized or it would need to get delisted by Caltrans. Uh, that normally doesn't happen, but we've seen it happen lately, surprisingly. Uh, when I was a consultant, I worked on a few billboard projects and mine was strictly looking at what the codes within that city said. But I didn't have to get into all these, all this level of detail. When I heard that they were able to delist a few areas, uh, I was shocked and and our consultant Scott Sheldon was even. More blown away cuz he's been doing this for thirty-five years, so. Um, this area would will probably need to be a relocation. This property not only includes seven acres within Pico Rivera. The property includes another seven acres of area outside of our city in industry. It's all one property owner. Uh, and they sold to an industrial developer. They have a static billboard on that property. So, that's, I'm assuming they're going to relocate that static billboard onto this property and change it from a static billboard. To a digital billboard, so.
Okay, great. Uh, and I just have one more question. Um, because I think that the, uh, the brightness of these digital billboards may raise some concern. Um, so if you could please describe the ambient light requirements, specifically the line that says. Uh, point-three-foot candles above ambient light at present distances. And then if you could also explain how this, uh, brightness standard would be, um, enforced.
So, they have to have dimmers that actually occur, so thank God they're they're, um, uh, digital. Cuz they can actually monitor them remotely and they can change the zone, the the lighting. Cuz as the the light gets, as the daylight goes down, the brightness actually increases. So, you have to dim the, uh, the digital bill, the digital phase so that it's not obtrusive to any cars driving by. And it's it's more readable, cuz I I don't know if any of you have tried to read something late at night. It's hard to read on your phone. You have to change the dimming, uh, feature on your phone and that's a lot how this works. I I don't know the photometrics, uh. Um, and how they do the measuring of foot candles and all of that. But, uh, whatever we do is gonna have to be approved by Caltrans and have all of those features where they can be modified. Not that they would be modified by hand, but they would be be based on, um, um, the sunlight, uh, dimming. Uh, as a as the sunlight goes down, there, uh, the dimmer switch starts working and lowering. And, uh, it's interesting how they do in, and I'm glad they're considering digital billboards cuz of quality and the resolution. Dots per, it's not dots per inch there. I think it's dot per foot, but, uh, it, uh, changes substantially the readability of them, so.
Thank you.
Um, I have a question, Mr. Garcia. Do you have the floor?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Martinez.
Hi, Mr. Garcia. Quick question. Um, the summary on page two, one through nine, is that fixed or is that up, um, for modification?
On page, oh, in the staff report, sorry. This is what was being proposed. Um, so what could change are, if you wanted to, um. Put the the, uh, maybe the maximum height or something of that nature, you could make, yeah. The these are up for your consideration right now, so now would be the time to consider.
And in your opinion, should we include something such as creating an easement for the site? Or, um, if need be, the developer should provide road access to and from the site?
So, good question. Um, typically, billboards are done via, uh, either an actual acquisition of that property or an easement. In this case, because it's going to be on that private property, what's going to be, uh, um. It, they're gonna have to provide an easement. And so, when that development agreement gets put into place. They will have to provide an easement for, uh, access vehicles who need to go in and maintain that billboard. And, uh, so that would be, uh, that's why I was saying a lot, a lot more detail comes out in the development agreement in the future.
Gotcha. And what about, uh, for road accessibility? To avoid the city paying for that, if need be.
So, on this property, they actually submitted to us where we would vacate Bay Bar Road, which is only accessible to that property. So, that once you enter that property, you would be now be entering onto their, onto their private property. And so, this would be, this billboard that they're proposing will be on their private property. But just outside of an area that is being considered for vacation. And it's almost a full acre of Bay Bar Road, but it only goes to that property. It doesn't go through, uh, to. It doesn't go through to any other. to, it doesn't go through to any other street. It, it was strictly used for that property there.
And do you suggest we add it now for future billboard?
Um, no, I would, I would leave it as is and we, and whenever you need an easement on a, on a, on a, for any billboard access, they would have to build that into the development agreement. So that's a great question. On the Carlson site, to get to that property, you're going to have to go onto their private property, substantially drive onto it, because where they're looking at putting it is, uh, about four hundred feet north of the railroad bridge that's there. Um, so they're going to need an access easement from Beverly Boulevard over the bridge that they're proposing to that site, so. Uh, it would strictly be for servicing that billboard, though.
Fair enough, yeah, I just didn't want, uh, the city to pay for such things like that, but thank you.
The deals are pretty, I can't discuss the details of the, the, the proposals, but, uh, in these, uh, financial times, we're happy with, uh, the proposed, uh, deal point memorandum that's being prepared for both of these billboards. And there's still, there's still a ways away before approval, so. The Bay Bar Road project might come before you sooner, significantly sooner than the Carlson site. I'm guessing within this next few months even.
Excellent, fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And, uh, this is Monica Villalobos. I wanted to just say, I think that, um, as you were sort of alluding to, there's potential here for revenue that could be used for the city that would help in, in tough economic times. I have some personal, uh, concerns about managing billboard content, as you were alluding to, so I'd be looking forward to reviewing those development agreements and how we can kind of, uh, see what parameters could be set in terms of certain type of content. Um, just thinking about, you know, sort of the image of the city and wanting to maintain something that speaks to the moral character of, of our neighborhoods. Um, but otherwise, I think the proposal for the zoning modification, um, makes sense.
Thank you.
I have a question. Um, if you could explain to me, are these billboards going to be similar to the ones in Commerce by this five freeway?
No, these would probably be closer to what the, the billboards in Santa Fe Springs on the five freeway look like. They're, they're, they will probably be double-faced. Um, and they will have good visibility from the freeway as you're, the ones in Commerce on the Citadel are a long, uh, well, no, I think some of them are. Um.
But I'm saying that height and the.
Perpendicular.
Will it be similar?
They'd be more like the, the billboards in Santa Fe Springs that were just built. I'm thinking they're going to look more like that. If you're down between, uh, south of Rosecrans, uh, north of Carmenita on the five freeway. They put a ton, every thousand feet, it seems like they've got new billboards that they put up in the last few years and these were, these two, it's only going to be two, and they're looking at double-faced, uh, billboards. Um, they would, they would look more like the ones on the five freeway, uh, in Santa Fe Springs, just south of Norwalk. So it's really Carmenita, it's Carmenita to Valley View.
Okay. My, my, my concern is, like, Rose Hills, it's very dark in there when you're on the freeway. Night, it's very dark. People nowadays, we know, they're looking at their phones or they're texting. And we just, I just wouldn't want any of our community, surrounding community members to get in an accident reading these. If it's changing and they're looking at it, are they paying attention to the road? Is it a distraction? That, that's my concern for a billboard, especially in those dark corners of the freeway. And then you have, if you come up Beverly, you have that, um, freeways, like off, where you can go, like a side ramp. It's a huge one where people stop if they have trouble with their cars. That's near and they don't see it. I mean, to me, I think it's, it's kind of, um, dangerous to put a billboard in that dark area of the freeway, just for the concerns of the motorist. I don't, I don't really like the idea of, of the, of amending this. That's my personal opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, that's what the, these billboards are being proposed to.
Yes.
Look like, because, yeah, I mean, I, I, I echo some of the concerns my fellow commissioners have expressed. Um, I mean, the Citadel's great, but in terms of, you know, we're talking about Pico de Veda here, we're not, you know, I don't, I, I also wouldn't want to see, you know, huge rectangular, uh, I think those are a little more feasible, in my opinion. Um, you know, to, to take in for, for the city. Uh, but my question is, you know, does, you know, there were seven areas studied. Were there, are there, why are there seven areas? You know, are, are these only the areas that can be potentially?
Those are the areas that the, um, consultant felt were close enough for visibility and readability. And from those, uh, uh, thank you, Gabriel, from those, the, uh, there were only two areas that he thought would have any visibility. Because before we be continued any discussions with those property owners, we wanted to see if this made any sense, so. For example, the, 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 the bill, uh, the on, on-premise billboard that's at Pico Rivera Sports Arena is very far. Very far off the freeway. I think it's three hundred and eighty feet off the freeway. Um, so when you're driving north or coming south on that, you, you gotta really look, and it's not digital. Uh, they've just put a, and it's significantly smaller than these, so. Uh, when we first started talking to Scott, he was like, oh, I don't see how this would work, you're going to be a hundred plus feet off the freeway, but then when he went out and measured and looked and videotaped and, he said, I could see one here and I could see one there and they're landscape areas, so they gotta be delisted, or, you know, there's, there's some challenges there. And then he was, you know, and he's from Northern California. When he saw the billboard at the sports arena, he said, why would they have ever put one there? It's so far off the six oh five freeway. And I said, you know, surprisingly, people are able to read it. And he, and he was just blown away that it, that it even existed. Because I, we asked, like, could, should that be something that we work with the Army Corps to get that, you know, redone? And he said, I wouldn't, it's too far off the freeway and, uh, you know, why would you put a billboard there? So, uh, it was interesting hearing his perspective. Because I grew up reading that, you know, on the six oh five, up and down the freeway, and it, it is significant. When you're in the, heading north on the six oh five, it's like four hundred and fifty feet, I think, away from the northbound traffic. Um, so, yeah, he, he did not think, I had asked him to look at that, he said, oh, no, that's, I'm, I, you shouldn't even ever consider redoing that billboard. So it was interesting to hear, because we want it to be more readable and more presentable and, and help with marketing the sports arena and the events that happened there and to hear from him, it was, it was funny. He was like, no, it's, it's not, it's, you know, why would you do it there, you know? It was interesting.
Yeah, and, and if we go back to the visual of the Santa Fe billboard, that was, that was thankful, thank you for putting that up, it's helpful, at least to for my questions. When you mean two fa, it's going to have two faces, uh, one on this side, one on the opposite side? And that's included in the, in this, uh, resol, or what is this?
Yes, this would allow for, um, digital billboards and, uh, and double-sided, double-faced.
And it's only along the six oh five freeway and five freeway? Well, this is no way is this going to go into our neighborhood street?
No. No, it'd be too close to any residential, any other locations.
And, you know, I have another question, you know, if, you know, if this were to get approved and, and, and in the process of these negotiations, what's the possibility of, or what, is there an angle that the city takes in share, in, uh, you know, we're going digital, right? It means electricity. I mean, we have Prime, is there any way that the city can have these billboard companies use Prime or, or sign up for Prime?
As part of the discussions with the industrial developers, we're talking about doing, uh, solar with both, uh, industrial companies, uh, 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 property owners that are doing the industrial development to see if we can bring Prime in and put solar on those rooftops and, and that would be a great idea to, it, to add, include that in to the billboard, the, the electricity that drives those billboards. You know, something that could be considered here is that, I'm trying to think how we would add this to the, so it's only those air, those two areas. You know, there are no other areas on the six oh five that make any sense from a market standpoint. So if you, if you want, the planning commission could probably say areas, uh, five and the only areas that could be, it would be areas of five and one.
Because hypothetically, would, if it's being for, if it's for the six oh five, I mean, six oh five mainly because the five isn't, it's, it's there, but not, not much. Can the owners or the current billboards, can they just change it to be electronic and next thing you know, we have a row of electronic billboards? I, I understand that there's five hundred feet distance, thousand feet distance, give, uh, on whatever the billboard is, but I don't think a row, a billboard row is
Yeah.
what we should be aiming for, or at least allowed to happen.
That's what I'm wondering, with this one, there's already a billboard that is, uh, right off of Telegraph, um, uh, in Downey, so the south side of Telegraph. So the only place a billboard would go would be at the very, very edge of Bluff Road and Telegraph, which is the, Bluff Road is the westernmost, western and southernmost, uh, road right there. Right at the edge, um, this was only included. So I imagine you could make an amendment to, to say, consider area five and area one. That'd be, yeah.
Yes, we, we can add that to, um, the resolution to specify, to include a map, actually, of those two areas, to limit to those two areas.
This, this is not being brought to consider, you know, administration and, and council had concerns about digital billboards coming in. They had significant concerns. Um, when the analysis was conducted by the, by the, uh, by the consultant, that's when they, they said, okay, because they didn't think it made any sense, uh. Uh, honestly, neither did our consultant, until he went out and looked at them and did his studies, so. And it really is only area one, north of Mission Mill Road, on what is right now Bay Bar Road. The idea is to vacate that section of Bay Bar Road and, uh, then this area on the Carlson property. And as I mentioned, this one's a little, little more. You're going to have to build a bridge across the rail line from Beverly Boulevard over the rail line to drop into the Carlson site. And that's going to be challenging, so.
When you see the ones on, on the five freeway, that, that freeway's lighted, there's a lot of light, there's a, the, what is it, the, the In-N-Out, the Chairman's, Northwoods, what is that restaurant? There's a lot of light there. It's not the same as over here on the six oh five where it's so dark. I'm just thinking safety-wise.
Oh, yeah.
Do we want to consider, um, I think, that idea that perhaps this is something to consider if it was amended to include a map that only adopts the resolution in areas one or five, or one and five?
And, and as, as, you know, it's more, let's just say, opportunity develops, can more areas be added to this in the future?
Absolutely.
I think, I think that would be something to entertain.
Um, we would need a, a motion in a second.
Can, can we get a motion on that?
Yeah.
A motion, what is the motion going to be?
Um, the motion would be to amend the resolution to adopt the changes in the zoning with the inclusion of a map to only specify the changes to areas one and five.
Is there a second?
Second.
I will take real call.
We're voting on the, on the amendment?
Correct.
Mr. Chair, I have a quick question. Before I take my vote, is this just for the amendment? Is this vote just for the amendment?
This would be to include the two areas to the ordinance. So it would be the ordinance, um, including the two areas.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
Chairperson Estrada?
Yes.
Chairperson Villalobos?
Yes.
Commissioner Celis?
Um, with clarification, I'm, I'm voting no on this whole resolution.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Vanessa Martinez?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes. Um, so a, at the next, uh, planning commission meeting, um, or if not sooner, we will bring an amended resolution for the signature of the chairperson.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
And please keep in mind, this is a recommendation to the city council, so the resolution will be forwarded to the city council for final approval.
Did you have a question? Oh, okay. Thanks again. So I believe that wraps up this item and the public hearing, and which, again, there were none. Uh, we'll move on. Any public comments? Was, was anything submitted?
Nothing was submitted?
Submitted, I was, nobody is here, um, so no public comments. We have nothing else, uh, on either consent calendar items, agenda, uh, planning commission reports, uh, city council meetings.
So since we last met, there was the April twenty-seventh, uh, city council meeting, and it included an amendment to the annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program. Um, it also included, uh, to allow for the emergency senior meal program that is funded through CDBG funds, um. It, and we included, uh, just so you know, a contract to do amen, uh, uh, amenities and improvements to City Hall here, uh, mainly to meet, uh, accessibility requirements per the American with Disabilities Act. Our city council is quite outdated and needed, needs to go through some, uh, 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 accessibility upgrades and some other, uh, minor interior improvements. The bulk of the money will be spent on, uh, meeting accessibility requirements. Water rates, rates were approved that night as well, and, uh, that night, a big item was the pension obligation bond. The pension obligation bond is a way of refinancing to take advantage essentially of the, uh, low interest rates right now. Our outline, uh, obligation for retirement, uh, expenses for the city. On the May eleventh, uh, council meeting, uh, the third quarter budget review was conducted. Uh, we have a pleasant news, sales tax, uh, revenue was, was good and property tax revenue has stayed, uh, very stable and, uh, so we're very pleased with our sales tax revenue reports that came out for the third quarter. Um, and what was presented in front of the council in a draft format was the first, uh, biennial budget, a two-year budget that the city's ever considered. And it was, uh, a good exercise for our department to not only look at the, the next two years, but we also internally did what we're calling, what we called a long-term strategic planning effort, was to look at a five-year period. What are we going, what projects do we foresee and occurring in the next five years? And, and that really helped us shape our two-year budget. Uh, we amended the section eight, uh, um, guidelines to allow basically for a lottery system. The way it was drafted before was, uh, first come, first serve, uh, uh, for opening up the waiting list. And we're, we wanted to allow a lottery system, as most, uh, housing authorities are doing right now. And, uh, we're going to be reopening, uh, our waiting list, because we had no more residents left on the waiting list. They were all folks who didn't live in town and the waiting list is quite old now. I think it's over ten years old, so. Um, we included the summer food service program, uh, uh, funding and approval by council. And for, for us, in our department, we, uh, oversee. And for, for us in our department, we oversee the fireworks stands. Uh, and the permits to get issued and the approval of the nonprofits that are gonna be operating those ten fireworks stands. The week prior to uh, uh, Fourth of July, that was approved by city council on the May eleventh as well. And that's all I had to report out of.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. And uh, we have no new business or old, so I think with that, it's appropriate to adjourn. And thank you, everybody, for tuning in and for your comments and questions.